Follows meeting your order, please rise to the pledge allegiance and the implication of the following. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Green.
Here.
LaFleur.
Here.
Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Ricks.
Roberts.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Yar.
Here.
Okay, can we have a motion to excuse the mayor? He's out of town this evening.
So moved.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Need the approval of the minutes of city council meeting of June 1st, 2015.
So moved.
There any questions on the minutes? Any comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, audience comments at this time? Like to have anybody that would like to come up here right now that got on the agenda for this evening? Come up and speak. And, but I also see that we have Ms. Good Old Days in her court. If they would please come up to the podium, state their names. We are honored this evening.
Hi, I'm Lauren Riggs. I'm your Ms. Richmond 2015. I just want to say I'm so excited to represent the city of Richmond this year with my fellow court members Haley Nicolopoulos and Stephanie Graham. We have ten parades, I think, still, even though Frank and Muth was just canceled because of the rain.
Only ten?
Only ten. We had one, and where was that? St. Clair Shores?
Yeah.
Yes, and that was awesome. It was really hot, but I loved it. We got to wear these. So.
I'm Haley Nicolopoulos. Uh, so far this year, we've attended the Spring Fest and the community at Richmond High School, and we judged the sidewalk chalk contests. And it was kind of cool because we got to interact with the little kids, you know, get to know them a little bit. And then we also had the Easter egg hunt at the park and BB Street Park. And, uh, that was kind of cool because like we would help like the little kids find Easter eggs or we would just go and take some pictures with them so they would get to know us a little bit better.
Hi, Stephanie Graham. I'm a court member of Ms. Richmond 2015, and I would like to talk about upcoming events that we have. Um, this Wednesday, we are actually having lunch with the first lady of Michigan, the governor's wife. And, um, we're really looking forward to that, and we are so excited to represent Richmond in front of the state of Michigan. Um, we also have some parades coming up. As Lauren said, we have ten more to go, some on, we have, yes, Bay Ramah is next, so that will be... Oh, yes, they get, they support a breakfast for us, so that will be very fun, and we get to have the breakfast with other queens from other places. So, we are so excited to be representing Richmond, and thank you for all of your support.
Well, we are very honored also to have you representing the city of Richmond. It is, uh, it's a proud tradition, uh, that's what, fifty, fifty-two years?
I believe so.
Fifty-two years now. Um, that good old days have been around, and it just keeps getting better. While other ones are dropping off, ours just gets better.
Thank you.
So, congratulations on your, on your post, and enjoy it.
We will. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, any other adoption agenda, Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? Okay, need a motion to adopt your agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, all, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Uh, we need a motion for the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
There's no discussion on consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. This evening, we have, uh, public hearing and twelve items for consideration. So, we're going to get started on the, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Public hearing?
On the public hearing.
Certainly. Uh, council scheduled to hold a public hearing on the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. Uh, the total city budget is eleven point six five million, including a three point seven million general fund budget. The city council held four budget workshops in April and May, and the proposed budget that's in front of you tonight includes the modifications made by council during those budget workshops. Uh, the budget calls for a tax levy of sixteen point six five two-six mils for general operating purposes, and there's also a one percent admin fee, uh, placed on the, on the tax bills as well as a hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents annual fee for tax, uh, trash collection and recycling.
Okay, can I have a motion to open up the, uh, the public hearing?
We don't need a motion.
Don't need a motion?
Just if there's no comments, we'll, uh, we'd have a motion to close.
Okay.
So, at this time, if there's anyone in the public.
Yeah, so anybody in the, in the public who'd like to have, make any comments about the, uh, city budget, please come up to the podium and state your name. City council? Anything? Okay, uh, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2015-2016 budget at seven oh seven.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, going to consideration of adoption, resolution number 2015 dash seven, adoption of fiscal year 2015-16 city, uh, city budget, Mr. City Manager.
As mentioned, during the public hearing, uh, the total city budget's eleven point six five million, uh, three point seven million dollar general fund budget, uh, also includes a set aside equal to roughly two mils, uh, for road improvements into the street improvement fund through a combination of general fund and TIFA monies, uh, and it also includes, uh, several of the changes that were made during the budget workshops.
Okay, have a motion, please.
Move to adopt resolution number 2015 dash seven, which adopts the city of Richmond fiscal year 2015-16 budget, appropriate necessary sums for each fund of the city, adopts the 2015 to 2020 capital outlay program, directs the levy of taxes and fees for municipal purposes, and directs the preparation of the tax roll and collection of taxes.
We had, uh, like City Manager said, we had four budget meeting. But we went through everything. City manager and staff did an outstanding job presenting everything to us and laying it out for us. Rough year, but we're getting by, so. Any other, any comments, uh, on this?
Yes, Mr. Uh, you know, unfortunately, we're still, have a budget shortfall, and it's a smaller amount than last year, as we continue with a little way of that. Um, one, hopefully with the, the property tax, uh, property values returning a bit. I think we're still shy, you know, we're still have to work through it. Uh, you know, it's disappointing, I was in Lansing last week, and the transportation budget went through, and the House plan is to, part of it is, the package was to get taken out of the, the general fund revenues, which ultimately then could mean revenue sharing. So they haven't figured out where that's going to be. So next year, we could see, again, the Senate's going to have their plan, the Governor Snyder's going to weigh in on it, but, uh, we definitely at risk still based on what they were talking about, of, uh, having to make up more. So, hope we continue to push on our reps not to, in their budget process to, as we're already short.
Anybody else? Any comments from all in the audience on this item? Back to the table.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp. Um, yeah, I think, uh, administration did a great job on preparing everything. We had real good discussions at the four budget workshop meetings, and, uh, you know, it's a little bit tough, but we've been able to make sure that we keep the same quality of life within Richmond and the services that we had. Had to make a little bit of changes, but overall, I want to thank the administration again for having everything in place for us so that we could, uh, make the right decisions.
Absolutely, and with, uh, being a transition year this year, um, everybody did very well. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. I approve consideration of the adoption of the fiscal year 2015-16 city fee schedule. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider adopting fiscal year 2015-16 fee schedule. There are changes to the upcoming fee schedule in administration, building, cemetery, library, police department, recreation, and the sanitary sewer and water funds. Uh, the majority of the, uh, changes were necessary just to cover costs, um, especially in the opening-closing fees on the cemetery. Public Service Director Gutsinger, uh, outlined for us kind of the true costs, uh, that were in there, so a lot of those changes are due to that. Um, also, there is a few instances where, uh, we increased fees or added fees that were already being charged, um, but we didn't have them, they were omitted from our, our fee schedule. There are some building fees that were on the state schedule but weren't on the local fee schedule, uh, so we did make some changes to that. And then the one, uh, item on the water department, uh, we did have an, uh, two percent increase to our, uh, water rate, uh, to keep, make sure that we're on track for infrastructure improvements, uh, things like that.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the city of Richmond fiscal year 2015-16 fee schedule as presented by the city manager.
Support.
Okay, discussion.
I have one on page seven, under the winter rates, where it says muslim and is that supposed to be columbarium?
Yes, my apologies, there is a, it should be muslim and columbarium period, and then, uh, the remaining was, uh, crossed out.
Okay.
Sorry, I forgot the second half of that word.
That was all.
Anything else?
Yep. I wanted to compliment the staff. I think every year, we look at these fees, fees aren't, as I said, aren't meant to create a profit for the government, it's meant to compensate for the, the cost of the actual service, and particularly regarding the, the cemetery, fees had to be adjusted, but I think our DPS director did a very good job presenting why it was costing what it's costing, and that we charge a fair rate for what the service is. And I appreciate staff continues to modify these. I think it's, and sometimes it's actually been lowered based on, you know, that it wasn't costing us, we found it wasn't costing us, and we're continuing to try to keep that a fair.
Yes, there were a couple fees, even, um, late fees, I think in the library, that the, they were intended to be the replacement cost for a DVD, and we actually lowered them due to the cost being less.
Anybody else? Audience, any, uh, comment on this issue? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item three, consideration of approving the TIFA tax-based sharing agreement, Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider entering into a tax-based sharing agreement with the city of Richmond Tax Increment Finance Authority. Under the agreement entered by both TIFA and the city council, a portion of the captured assessed value, uh, can be shared from TIFA back to the city. Uh, this is a similar agreement that we've been entering into, uh, since back in 2012-13 fiscal year. Uh, so it hasn't changed, uh, the legal framework underneath it, hasn't changed, uh, we still are, uh, relying on a legal opinion from Miller Canfield, and the, uh, then the agreement has just been updated to reflect the current fiscal year, and the percentage is thirty-four percent, which is the same as last year.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the captured assessed value sharing agreement between the city of Richmond, TIFA, and the city of Richmond fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
So I think TIFA's a valuable part of how we, uh, get things done around the city and, um, make things, uh, what do you want to say, uh, improve the, the city, uh, as a whole in, uh, in the parks and the streets and, uh, the city businesses, and so I think it's, uh, something that definitely needs to keep going at this point.
Anybody else? Any audience participation on this item? If not, back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, item number four, consideration of special event request, Community Baptist Church outdoor worship service. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from the Community Baptist Church of Richmond to hold a family fun fest, picnic, and concert on Saturday, August 1st, and a, uh, community church service on Sunday, August 2nd. This is the third year, I believe, for the church service, and the second year for the concert on Saturday. Uh, I have talked to both, uh, the church and the festival, uh, chair regarding this, and I think all the issues have been worked out, and we'll coordinate the exact tent location as we get closer to the event. I think there was one kind of other organization that had another event on, was it Sunday? Or, on Sunday, uh, but, uh, Councilor Green has worked that out, she's involved in both organizations, that was the Richmond Bees Vintage Baseball Group, okay, so.
Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the Community Baptist Church of Richmond's special event request to use BB Street Park for a family fun fest, picnic, and concert on Saturday, August 1st from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and an outdoor worship service and picnic on Sunday, August 2nd from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., with the condition that they coordinate the location of the tent with the Good Old Days Festival.
Support.
Discussion. Uh, in the past, I know that Steve has, uh, has talked with, with Tim and that, and that they, and, uh, to get the location, I also see that they are having a, a portage on this year?
Yeah, I think they have the last.
Did you have one last year?
Yep.
I can't, you know.
You remember?
Sometimes I can't remember who I am, so.
Yeah, and I think we've worked with them. I know, uh, the festivals allow them to tie into the electrical panel that's outside the barn there, uh, during the concerts, it's important for their pay, PA system, and then I think they've also in the past let them use the, kind of the back of the barn there for storage of certain things, so, uh, I know Tim had talked to me and said he'd be, we'd be able to work that out again.
And then I'm still working on getting a lot of the, they, uh, usually extend to the east part of the field, but that's where the game will be, so for safety, they need to move to the other side, more towards BB Street for the activities.
Okay.
Otherwise, they might get hit by a baseball.
No. Any other comments at the table here? Any audience participa- participation on this item? If not, back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Item number five, consideration of signage request, summer concert series, senior helpers. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request from senior helpers to have signage that would advertise and direct people to the free concerts in the park, uh, that are held on Thursday evenings, um, this year, uh, over in BB Park. Senior helpers works with our recreation department to, uh, sponsor these. Uh, the concerts this year are June 25th, July 30th, and August 20th, and as, uh, I think, is this Rand the third year or fourth? Uh, fourth year that they've sponsored these. Uh, Rand is here from senior helpers if there's any questions tonight, uh, and we've always approved, uh, allowing him to place additional signage throughout town.
I have a motion.
I make a mo- I make a motion to approve the special event application from senior helpers to have temporary signage in conjunction with the concerts in the park on June 23rd through 25th, July 28th through 30th, and August 18th through 20th, with the following condition, the applicant shall work with the city staff on proper placement of the signs to minimize any site visibility issues.
Man, would you like to come up and say anything, or?
We're just, uh, we're just sitting here by, hopefully, that here we offer hot dogs and, uh, and, uh, creamed hot dogs. We're just trying to grow, it's real hard to ever say.
Council, any comments?
I just want to thank you for doing this. This is a great part of the community, I love to see events in the park, and it is very much appreciated, especially as the business community gets more involved with our residents.
You know, you don't give to us, we don't give back.
Anybody else up here at the table?
Yeah, I concur with Councilor Green also as well, and I think Thursday's probably a, a better day for, for the events, I'm glad to see that, so I moved to Thursday to try to get more participation.
Any audience comments on, uh, on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And good luck with, with everything there. Okay, consideration of fiscal year 2016, SMART contracts, Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to approve the SMART municipal credit and community credit contracts for fiscal year 2016. Contract reflects council's request that funds, request to fund the Richmond Lennox EMS Community Transit Program with the SMART funds. Uh, this year, we will be receiving sixteen thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars.
I have a motion.
I move to approve the SMART municipal credit and community credit contract for fiscal year 2016, and agree to transfer the amounts of five thousand six hundred and sixty-two in municipal credits and ten thousand six hundred and twelve dollars in community credits to Richmond Lennox EMS in payment for their community transit service.
Mr. White, would you like to come up and, uh, say a few words?
I'll just, uh, I'll just mention to council, uh, the service continues to be well utilized here in the city. I took just a very brief look, uh, before leaving the station tonight for the meeting. Looked like we transported well over twenty-eight hundred seniors and disabled people, uh, here within the city, uh, for mostly medical, um, and or, uh, treatment type appointments, whether it be dialysis, doctor's appointments, things like that, and even to and from things like the grocery store. Uh, we also, uh, use the service for, uh, events such as Good Old Days. Uh, the chamber uses it a couple times a year for their events, recently the Lions Club used a vehicle, uh, for a night, um, and, uh, and the, and the annual ICE Fest, uh, the vehicle's been used for. Also, I had mentioned that, that we always mention a lot about this, but, but we should, and, and that is, every morning about 5:00 a.m., one of the buses starts in Memphis and finishes a route that comes through Richmond and ends at Twenty-three Mile Road in Grashit, and then in the evening, uh, does that route on return. They run it from about 5:00 till 9:00 each morning, and then about 3:00 in the afternoon until 8:00 p.m. each night. And the idea is really on that route to get people to and from work. Uh, and we have a number of people who get on it here in Richmond, uh, and, and the community is moving south, that, that's, like I say, ends down at Twenty-three and Grashit where the folks can transition to a, what they call a line haul bus. Uh, we use one of our little shuttles for that, and, uh, as it passes through town here, you'll see it about half full, and by the time it's at Twenty-three and Grashit, sometimes it's a standing room only, uh, vehicle. So, so that vehicle's out there. So, uh, we're doing well over, uh, three thousand calls, uh, or three, sorry, three thousand riders here, uh, in, uh, in, uh, just Richmond alone, uh, with that, with that vehicle, so at a little over sixteen thousand dollars, which is the same amount we got last year, it's, uh, right around five dollars a ride, and when you think about the distances we're traveling, oftentimes from Richmond to, uh, McLaren Hospital or Richmond to Henry Ford Hospital and, and those kind of areas, five dollars is, is, uh, is, is pretty reasonable for anybody who's, uh, who's getting on board it. So, uh, like I said, we appreciate the continued support of council, and, and we look forward to another, uh, very busy year with that service. Thank you.
And we thank you because it is, is service that is very well needed. Appreciate everything. Back to the table, any comments?
Yes.
Mr. Yarck?
Just want to compliment Jeff and your staff and the service that you provide our community, and as a member of SEMCOG's Transportation Coordinating Council, uh, the Richmond Lennox Service is actually mentioned down there as, when we talk to SMART people, as a, being a shining reflection of what a small community can do when it comes together, so with the EMS and provide a service for the residents.
Mr. Mayor, before the vote, I think it may be worthwhile to mention, uh, it struck me when Council Yarck mentioned SEMCOG, the EMS did just recently receive a letter, uh, from, uh, from SMART, uh, with regards to the new headquarters we're talking about building, and, and through some Federal Transit Authority grants and other funds, uh, they've already allocated, uh, three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars towards the new headquarters, uh, that will house the, uh, house the buses, with some assurance that there'll be, uh, further money available in December, uh, for that, uh, for that project. So, so that project, uh, continues to, continues to move forward. Thank you.
Perfect. Real good. Anybody else at the table? Any audience, uh, participation on this item? If not, back to the table. All. Oh, sorry.
Otherwise, it came here on the table.
I'm Rand Hewitt from Senior Helpers, and I just want to compliment Jeff and his staff. We work very closely with them, and I'm involved with the Rotary and also the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, and Jeff works very closely with both of those to help support a lot of efforts in this community through those SMART buses, so it's a wonderful, wonderful thing, and I certainly hope there's no questions about what he provides. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm, I'm sorry, you just got, got to wave louder. Okay, anybody else? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Uh, item seven, consideration of memorial bench BB Street Park, Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving the purchase of a memorial bench for BB Street Park. Area resident Wanda George approached the Recreation Department about purchasing a memorial bench in honor of her husband. He was a longtime user of the community center and passed away this past February. Uh, the Recreation Department has many wooden benches in the park that are in need of replacement, and they would like to use this as an opportunity to replace one of those. Uh, the particular bench that we're discussing is near the community center, uh, which is the, uh, facility that he used most often. Uh, they did follow the, uh, memorial policy that the city adopted, uh, back in, I think, uh, two thousand two, or, I'm sorry, two thousand one, uh, and filled out the appropriate paperwork, are willing to, uh, take care of the costs associated with this, uh, and also the rec department approved it.
Okay, I have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the memorial bench request to purchase memorial bench for the BB Street Park by Wanda George, with all costs to be paid for by the George family. Uh, our park benches are in need of repair, so I, this is a perfect way to be able to replace them, and then also to be able to recognize people who appreciate the park and people in the community, so I hope that you guys support this.
Any audience participation on this, uh, item? Not, back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. And it is a good thing. Okay. Okay. Item number eight. Consideration of special event request, the Odd Shakespeare in the Park. Mr. City Manager.
Counsel is scheduled to consider approving a request received from Josiah Pankowitz of the Odd Regional Youth Complex to conduct Shakespeare in the Park at the gazebo in BB Street Park. This event will be held on July 24th, 25th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and July 26th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. They are also asking for the use of some bleachers over in that area, and I believe the back of the barn for storing some of the props. I believe the mayor's already talked to Josiah about that. As long as we can work something out with DPW to get them over, and Tim will let us know which ones to move. There shouldn't be a problem. The council in the past has approved the Shakespeare in the Park event in 2010, '11, and '13.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event application for 2015 Shakespeare in the Park on July 24th, 25th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. On July 26th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m.
Support.
Discussion.
I don't know if you guys have seen it. Well, I know Mike has, but this is a great event. I think Mike's son has been in it before, and it is very entertaining.
I agree completely. It's a great event. It brings people into the park. And it's just so great to see the talented youth that we have in our communities for the theater arts program.
All we need is good weather, right?
Yes, that's right.
Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number nine. Consideration of adopting Resolution Number 2015-8, Credit Card Authorization Resolution.
Counsel is scheduled to consider Resolution 2015-8, a resolution authorizing the city manager, city treasurer, and city clerk as authorized representatives to make changes to the credit card account. Currently, we have two credit cards, both linked to the same $5,000 account. One with my name on it as the city manager, and one currently with the former treasurer, Marilyn Olson's name. However, in working with PNC to get these changed over to the new treasurer, Angel Hatfield, we realized that only Marilyn was authorized to make changes to this, or at least that's the bank's version of things. So we're adopting this resolution. We'll make the necessary changes. It'll be just like our checking account. It requires two signatures from within the treasurer, the clerk, and the city manager. And so then, we can make the changes if there's one of those people that moves on, and we have to make some changes rather than go through this again. I think we're hoping that this is probably the last piece of information that banks and insurance companies and things like that need to kind of move from Marilyn Olson to Angel.
Jay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-8, a resolution designating the city clerk, city manager, and city treasurer as authorized representatives with PNC.
Support.
Discussion. We have a beautiful check and balance on this.
We do. When you've had somebody in a position for as long as Marilyn was there, it just, it takes a while to get everything switched out.
Well, everything was taken for granted because she was on top of everything. And now, we have Angel that is right there, too. So, you know, the city's in really good hands, you know? If you sat back and take a look, the city is in very, very good hands. Is there anything that you would like to say on this, Angel? No? Okay. Counsel, any comments? Any audience participation? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion does pass. Item number 10. Consideration of adopting the Freedom of Information Act Policy. Mr. City Manager.
Counsel is scheduled to consider approving the Freedom of Information Act Policy Procedures and Guidelines. The state of Michigan passed new FOIA legislation, regulations as part of Public Act 563. The legislation, as you can tell by the background information here, significantly increases the amount of paperwork that municipalities will be dealing with. It also kind of limits some of our ability to recover some of those costs. I understand the intent of the legislation is to provide and make sure that people have access to information, but it will cause a little more work for us and cost us some money in the long run. But our, Mark Clark, one of our city attorneys, did work with Village of Romeo recently when they adopted their policy. And the Michigan Municipal League, Michigan Township Association, and Michigan Association of Municipal Attorneys all came together to develop the template that we're using.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the Freedom of Information Act Policy Procedures and Guidelines.
Support.
Comment? That's another thing that we have to provide, and we have to pay for it.
Is this, did we have a form like this before?
We had a one-page form.
Holy-
And we realized that, you know, essentially, most city attorneys always made the recommendation that, you know, if somebody makes a request, they may not even realize they're making a FOIA request, but treat it as such. It just covers yourselves. But this very clearly defines-
This is seven pages long-
Yes.
-that has to be filled out just as a detailed cost itemization, not including the big packet for the application.
Yeah, my favorite, I think, is the, we have to provide the public with a summary. And I think that summary is probably as long as it is.
Yes.
Like I said, I understand the intent, and certainly, the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act have their role, and we should be open to the public and have our, have documents available to them. But this makes it a little bit more difficult.
Any other comments?
I mean, transparency is important. And it's fundamental to a good government. Except unfortunately, some of this legislation gets passed by people who never actually had to fill out the forms. And I'm not, in some ways, sure we're advancing.
Yeah. When I would hand a resident a one-page form, I could very easily kind of go through it with them. Handing them a seven-page form, they're going to get nervous.
Which is maybe not what the goal was.
Right.
To achieve transparency.
Yeah, yeah.
Make the process even harder.
Yeah.
I'm sure there'll be online classes how to fill these forms.
Anybody else up here? Any audience participation on this item? Not? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion does carry. Item number 11. Consideration of confirming the appointment of recreational director. Mr. City Manager.
Counsel is scheduled to consider confirming the city manager's appointment of the recreation director in accordance with Section 7.3A of the city charter. During the discussions on the budget this year, counsel considered requests received from the recreation board and library boards to have the library and recreation director positions separated once again. And at the May 11th budget workshop, the consensus of counsel is to direct administration to make that happen and go into effect July 1st. We have talked with current recreation assistant Margot Van Hove on her willingness to be the recreation director. And she has accepted that. And you've got a copy of that acceptance. Also, Margot has been with the recreation department since 2005 and has been the recreation assistant, senior programmer, since 2011. So she has a lot of experience with this. Also, Julie Anne is still going to be with the library as the library director. So there'll be a resource there and a willingness to help make sure the transition is smooth. Again, this would go into effect July 1st. It would be 32 hours a week from Labor Day to Memorial Day, and 40 hours from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve and confirm the city manager's appointment of Margot Van Hove to the position of interim recreation director in accordance with Section 7.3A of the city charter for an indefinite term to serve at the pleasure of the city manager.
Support.
I got a motion in a second. Margot, would you like to come up to the podium? You're not going to get away.
Public speaking is not my forte.
Mine neither. Counsel, do I have any questions for Margot?
I think your experience speaks for itself. And I think your dedication to the city and the Recs Department and everything you've been involved in, I think, complements you, and I think you'll do a fine job. Give my support.
And I thank you for accepting and not running away.
Again, we are very, very fortunate that we have people in the city that, you know, it just works out. Any comments?
Nope. Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
I also just want to recognize and thank you for your time serving as the senior coordinator. I don't know how that's going to fit in with it, but it's very much appreciated, and it was, the program is run very smoothly.
Nope, thank you.
And just thank you for your job for that.
Any other comments up here at the table here? Any audience participation on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion?
If we're coming back to the table.
Jay, I came back to the table.
Okay. But I think that the heroes in this issue is our Rec Board. You know, they wanted a director reinstated. You know, we've had hard times. Obviously, we've passed the budget. We're still short. But I compliment our Rec Board, who is really citizen volunteers, who dug deep, dug hard into that to make it happen, to give us a proposal where they found the money within the budget to cut it, to make the wages together, put the wages together, to have that director back. So all those people on the Rec Commission, I want to compliment them for doing the heavy lifting to help make what they asked for happen.
And I'd like to thank Julie Anne for all, her time that she put in over there, too. And she's not going away, so she's at the library. So, you know, that's kind of cool. Any other comments back here? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Okay. Consideration of establishing a quarterly roundtable meeting, date and special meeting at the fire department. Mr. City Manager.
Counsel is being asked to schedule its next quarterly roundtable meeting, and also establish a special meeting at the fire department to discuss vehicles and long-range plans. The calendar pages were sent out to counsel and came back. I think this may change. Originally, the dates that were available were Monday, July 27th, and Wednesday, July 29th.
Okay. Do we want to forego making a motion? Because I understand we do have an issue here with some dates.
I think that makes sense.
Okay. All right. Shall we try for the quarterly roundtable?
The 13th would be my suggestion.
The 13th? Jeff, you can-
Yeah, what I had that I got canceled in the last week, so I'm able to open that up.
Okay. So nobody else has got anything on the 13th, right? So we could pencil that one in? And how about a meeting with the fire department?
The 29th?
The 29th?
Yeah.
It looks good to, okay. That wasn't so hard.
Counsel Green, on the 29th, would it be better if we started at 7:00 for you? Or once you're gone?
Yes, we could start later.
I know you're, you have the commitment that day, so. Then on 13th, I'll leave it open.
About for the time?
Yeah. Suggestion.
We'll look at 5:30.
Eight times good for me.
Five, 5:30?
5:30.
5:30.
And we want to do one for the fire department anyway, while we got that, and then we could just make a motion.
Seven?
Seven? Seven good for everybody else?
Hmm.
Seven for the 29th, yeah.
Okay. Can we have a motion for the roundtable, please?
Make a motion to schedule a special quarterly roundtable meeting of city council on July 13th, 2015, at city hall at 5:30 p.m.
Support.
Discussion. Back to the audience, any discussion on this item? If not, back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. And we have a second motion.
I move to schedule a special meeting of the city council on July 29th, 2015, at the Richmond Fire Department, beginning at 7:00 p.m.
Support.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, for a time, I really like this idea of us all getting together and going up to the fire department, looking at the equipment and the vehicles and everything. Because I know we all had a great interest in that, so I wasn't able to make the last meeting, but really glad that this is the first approach that we're going to do, and then look at setting up a committee after.
But it definitely gives everybody a hands-on to see how the equipment is, and what kind of condition it's in, and the hall needs and stuff. So I, too, really think it's a, it's a good idea to, and to get up there, so.
And of course, then we'll have to post this, right? It's an open meeting.
Yes.
Any other comments up here? Any audience participation on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Where am I? Ah. Is that all? City Manager's comments?
I was handed a calendar item to add from the Moose Lodge tonight. They have a child ID event this Saturday, June 20th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Children 16 and under. They'll have kind of a child ID package that they'll be working on over on Grand Trunk Avenue at the Moose Lodge. Hot dogs, chips, and juice will be offered. And so, there'll be an event there. Kind of around the table, just wanted to make sure that, just a reminder to all council members that the July and August council meetings, when we adopted the schedule, we placed those at 6:00 p.m., not 7:00 p.m. So for the next four meetings, four regular meetings, those meetings will be at 6:00 rather than 7:00. I have met, again, today with the chief on the code enforcement. We're continuing to make strides, and all of those have been turned in. And as you turn those in, and also people start to submit others. So we're making progress on those. Have made contact with a lot of property owners, and things are moving in the right direction. But we still have a ways to go. But we're keeping the pressure on. And then, city hall project's going well. Kind of really the main thing we're waiting for right now is the customer window. We're waiting for a piece of steel to go across the window to kind of provide a header for that. Once that goes in, they can finish off the ceiling and the carpet, I think, you may have started today. So they're kind of wrapping up some of those things over there. And the firearm qualifications went well this Saturday. I did, was able to stop out for the police department. I went to the sports room.
City council comments. Jamie?
Exciting day in the park today. It was the kickoff to all of our summer programs, so it was packed and hopping with families. And then even Camp Richmond starts next week. So when you go through the park, be aware that all the kids are there. And it's not too late to sign up for more activities.
Dean?
When I ask about the sidewalk thing, is that, the sidewalk we're doing on Main Street, is that, who's paying for that?
We are. When we put new sidewalk in where sidewalk has not been, our policy has been we special assess the property owner 50%. Our policy up to this point on the replacement has been it's at our cost.
Okay.
But the initial installation is at the property owner's expense.
All right. I do have a question about staffing on DPW. When are we going to find out more about that?
The, I'll do a little update for council on that. We should be having something at the end of this month, but it's a personal issue. I don't want to talk about it at the table, but I can provide counsel.
Well, vacations are coming up, that sort of thing, and don't want to be left shorthanded, so.
Tonya?
Thanks.
Dennis?
Jeff?
I'm excited to announce that we've made some progress on an issue I've been working on for a long time, manufactured housing, as the chair of SEMCOG's Manufacturer Housing Task Force. I got to attend a bill signing where PA 40 of 2015 was signed into law, which is a law to help protect mobile home property owners and, in fact, to deal with health and safety issues in those communities. So it was one piece of many issues I was working on regarding that, but it was nice to get something done on this issue. And I want to thank Representative Goiki and Senator Pavllo, both who signed those bills when it passed in their respective houses.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, circling back on the great progress that's being made at the City Hall, new City Hall, and at the police post as well. Do we think that for these council meetings that are going to be moved to 6:00 p.m., will we be able to do the July or August?
No, we won't be able to do the July. We're targeting, hopefully, that we will be there for August.
Okay. It's kind of nice if we kind of coincide at the change in time for the summer and be at the new location, so.
Yeah, realistically, looking at like all of the, kind of the computer phone, we want to do a cleanup here prior to moving, so we don't move stuff that we don't need to. And when you've been in a building for 20-some years, it's, yeah, we've got a little bit of work to do here, so. We had hoped that July, but yeah, probably August.
Great, thank you.
I would just like to thank Ms. Goodoldies and Queen Inter Court being here. Also, all, you know, administration thing on the budget, we made it through it. I am not the speaker that Mayor Ricks is, so if I haven't said something, I apologize.
Done good.
So we'll, we'll go to the calendar, see, and so today is the 15th. Got a library meeting?
You have a library meeting this?
On the 16th?
Friends.
Friends.
Friends, oh, I'm sorry, okay. And you said the Moose on the 20th, right?
Yeah.
And 21st is Father's Day, and it's the first day of summer. Good. Tiffa meeting on 24th?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Have a Tiffa meeting at 7:00. Okay, I guess this is into July already. My goodness. Happy Fourth of July to everybody, because our next meeting's going to be on July 6th here at 6:00 p.m. I also do have this blood drive from Richmond on X EMS. It's going to be on July 9th, and it's going to have new locations, it's going to be at the Lax Township Office, 63775 Gresham Avenue, Lax, Michigan. And as everybody knows, we are in dire straits for blood. Is there anything else that we need to put on?
Just at the Friday, I think, is that the 3rd maybe, on July, the city offices will be closed.
That's also my anniversary, so I'm glad that you're closed.
In honor.
Thank you. Anything else that's got to go on the council, on the calendar? Okay, no close session tonight? Any other business needs to be brought in front of the city council this evening? Not? A motion to adjourn would be.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
There's no discussion on adjournment motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion does pass. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening.